Okay, we're all here. The purpose of this meeting is twofold. One, you've, you've got a copy of the report, you've offered edits. With all your help, it's, it's a pretty good report, I think. So, thank you for all your assistance. Two things. One, we want to discuss the treatment area. Do we want to just treat the areas that were identified in the Kaiser study? Or do we want to come all the way to shore? Or do we want to treat the shore and the two areas separately? So, that's my introduction. I just want to listen to you guys to see what you think. And if we can come to consensus.
How old is the, the map that shows the area to be treated? Is that recent or is that a couple, three years old?
It'll be three years this spring. It was done in 2018.
Yeah, it probably, it doesn't not reflect mill foil along the shoreline, that's for sure. But, but there still is an area between the patch in the middle and the shoreline. That if there is mill foil there, it's not growing, you know, it's not growing to a point where it impedes your, your navigability. And since the water's pretty, pretty shallow there, at least the last time I was out on a boat, you could get through. So, what I'm saying is, I guess, you got this big blop in the middle, and then you've got a channel, and then you've got mill foil on the shoreline. I think Pat, you probably experienced that as well.
I think that my experience is that the areas have grown a little bigger than what's shown on the present map. Yeah, I think, I think it's spread out a little bit more. And I, I can tell you that in our area, and we live over just off of the foot of Elegant Street, right across from the General Home. And there are condos all along there. And we're all experiencing a lot of weed growth along the shoreline and in our docks. So, I'm, I'm thinking that, that the shoreline, the people own land along the shoreline would really benefit if we could somehow get that treated. And whether that's, and one of the things I was thinking about for that, and I don't know if it's possible, if you, if whoever's treating the center of the lake was able to get a permit for the entire lake. And then, we could contract individually with them as landowners or whatever shoreline owners to get the areas treated in front of our places. That would allow people wanted to do that, to do that independently. And, and it doesn't have to, because it's not public. I mean, the, the water is public trust. But the docks and, and all the shoreline is, is private ownership. So, that's one, one thing that I was thinking about when we're thinking about treating the shoreline.
Hey, Ken, this Bob Schuckman, can you guys hear me? I'm using my little smartphone. Great, alright, um, I, I sent Ken a, one of my intern students took our video that we collected in July. And it at least drew out the acreage in front of Kent's and mine and Garnet's complex. And also retraced the, the area in what I call the big part of Kalamazoo Lake there. Ken, you may want to share that with the whole committee through Karen. But, but the point I'm really trying to make is, we, there's enough video that was collected in July 2020 that we could actually relatively quickly draw up a map of where we see the Eurasian water mill foil, at least as of July 2020. The, the other thing that, that we put together literally over the weekend, which I think will support the committee. We took the preliminary bathymetric map we collected in October 2020 of both Douglas and, you know, the Sagatuck side. And that's, that's available on our website, which we're going public with tomorrow. So, I'll send everybody a, a link to it. But I also, again, had the intern take the five feet or shallower areas that we mapped in October and color coded that, because that, again, will give you an appreciation for at least a rough estimate of the amount of acreage along the shore that we'll have to deal with. So, again, that's available to this group. But that said, I, I was gonna weigh in in respect to, do we do the entire riparian area of the lake? Yeah, I'd love to do that, but I'm a little worried that, that if we start including everyone, then we're gonna get hung up in, in, in payments. And, and then we may end up with some shore owners that, that are really opposed to herbicides. We've run across those in the past. I don't wanna, I would hate to see the bigger effort, quote, our ship sunk in the process of trying to be magnanimous with everybody. I didn't explain that very well, but I, I think you get the gist of that. So, that's my comment.
Ken, it's Scott here. I think, I think getting a couple of good data points is, is key. And Bob, thank you for offering to pull together some mapping data. I think that's huge for us to get a real handle on kind of, you know, our primary target, you know, which I think is that area. I mean, I've got an old chart here from, I think, from the agent, and it shows the weeds kind of over by your condo. And kind of the area heading toward now where we have the, the dinghy dock, seems to be the real problem area. If, if that can get mapped with what Bob's got. Do we think we've got a responsibility or a problem around the dinghy dock, which I, I'm assuming would be ours to treat anyway? Anybody have a thought on that?
You know, personally, I haven't noticed anything over there. That's, that's one clear area. But when you get to where what Pat was describing, those condos there, it gets pretty thick.
Yeah, so I'm wondering, yeah, I, I'm wondering if, you know, the other question I had is, it's great if we get the data and the map. As the aquatic doctors, have they given any sense that, you know, there's a limit to what we can do? I mean, if we had a combined approach of, of the city and then people that wanted to kind of partner. You know, is, is there ever a point where we, where we, where, where, where we're hitting the lake too hard with too much this first time? Did they, did they give you any sense that, you know, this many acres, yes, that many acres, you might have unintended consequences?
No, they have not. In fact, they were kind of gung ho about doing the whole thing.
Okay.
But I, you know, I'm, I shouldn't even offer my opinion because I'm so ignorant. But I kind of, you know, when I realized what the cost was, I kind of said, whoa, back off. And so, but no, they, they did not think there would be any harm in doing the whole area. And, and they said, that's what Douglas is doing. So.
Okay, so that's, that, I think that answers my question. I, I think if we put out this report and do the big area that's clearly sort of what we envision as our responsibility around the navigable areas, you know, of, of the lake. And particularly if we do something like put, put, put it out in a press release highlighting the study, you know, the attack, the war on invasive species. And then offer private dock owners the opportunity to partner. End up getting most of what we want covered, covered. And it's also kind of creates a nice situation where it's a chance not only for us to save money as a city, but to, to make people feel like they're part of the process. And like, yeah, I'd like to, you know, our condo would like to join this effort because it's a problem for us. And, and.
Okay.
I, I like that approach as well. One concern I would have, and maybe Karen, this is something you could ask the aqueducts. Is if we, is if some owner, dock owners, a group said, no, we don't want to do anything, does that compromise others? In other words, that, that allow the, the weed to spread further? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I suspect not, but I don't know.
I'm sure you're right, Ken. I'm sure that pieces of this mill foil will break off and reseed down, you know, downstream from where they broke off. And, and the other thing is, I think that there's something about, if someone refuses to do it, doesn't want to have it done, you have to stay 100 feet away from their property. But how, how do you do that? If you're, I mean, with water moving, it's almost impossible to think of staying. But I guess you could just say, well, physically, we'll stay 100 feet away from
That's what.
riparian property. I guess that's all you can do.
Yeah, like you said, that's, like Ken said, that's apparently how the aqueducts had to deal with Douglas. And they had a few people that opted out. So.
Another thing is that Douglas was not aware of it, and either were we till recently, that we don't have to get riparian permissions. It's, it's, the city's right as a municipality to do it. However, like you said, that because we're not doing the shoreline, maybe, maybe that does come into play there.
Karen, unless maybe the other way around that would be is if the individual condominiums were to purchase that service from the city. Somehow.
Well, that's a thought.
Well, we would want to get the city's prices anyway.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if that, if, if the city accepts our report and, and goes forward with it. Maybe the city would be willing to say, we'll act as the, as, as the agent. And if you want your area done, you come and see us and we'll charge you. Maybe we charge you $5 a lineal foot or whatever we, it's going to cost to have that done. Or so much, so much per square foot, maybe or acre, however that might work out.
You know, Pat, Pat's idea is, is, is actually quite intriguing because, you know, we have done a lot of due diligence. We've already studied kind of what the solution is, and we're, we're pretty confident about that. We've got the report to, to demonstrate that. We'll also be taking on probably, I'm assuming, along with Douglas, the cost of getting the eagle permit. So, that would be something, that would be a cost saving to, to a condo association that opted to partner with. So, yeah, that's kind of, kind of an interesting idea. But then it's like, you, you know, if you'd like your piece treated, we'd probably end up with, you know, the big chunk in the middle. And then, we'd almost probably butt, butt up with, with what they want potentially, you know, around their docks. So, that's, it's kind of an interesting idea.
For us, in, in our condo, our docks go out about 30 feet from the shoreline.
Yeah.
And, and so, I'm figuring out how many lineal feet we have along the lake. And that would be about an acre of land in front of, in front of ours. To give you some idea, and, and you know where, where we're at, Ken, I think maybe everybody has an idea where Waterside is.
Yeah, and I think Bob, Bob estimated, what, Bob, three to five acres in front of our property?
Yeah, that sounds about right. If you go off 20 feet, probably, or so, yeah.
Well, our, yeah, our docks go out 40 feet. They're, but, but then I actually had the student use the drone footage. And depending on how far we go down to that new McMansion they're building at the end of our complex. You can, it's, it's anywhere from 3.7 acres to, to 4.6 or something. So, but it, we're splitting hairs at that point.
Well, this summer, many, most of the docks on the, that are owned by the condo people were being used. A few of the docks that are owned by the single family residents along there, like Kathy Hart and Craig, don't ever use their dock, but I suspect they would be willing to be part of it as well. I don't know.
Yeah, I would think so too, Ken. It, because it, it doesn't look very good, to be honest. It's, smells bad.
And for the private homes, that would not be a very big cost.
No.
Try 100 feet of frontage with that.
Right.
How many feet of frontage is your condos?
Boy, Bob, do you know? Well, I, I think I, it's over 270 plus. You know, we measured what would, what, what, where we would have to raise the seawall.
Right.
flooded areas, that was like 270 feet, and that was about maybe two thirds of, of all the frontage?
Yeah, it was roughly. And, and, and Karen, recall, our units face the big part of the lake. But then, we have an L where it goes along the river. So, that adds to the amount of real estate. But we really didn't have any vegetation, big problem along the riverside. It's really the, the part that faces into the Kalamazoo Lake proper.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, I'm just trying to visualize in my own head 40-foot docks with 270 feet of shoreline coming out to could be four and a half acres. So, I'm just, just working it in my head.
Yeah. Well, I, I like to think football fields, right? That's roughly an acre. So, but, but the real issue, Karen, was it, we had significant Eurasian water mill foil beyond the end of our docks. And, and that's particularly the ones closest to Lake Street. And when folks were trying to get into the dock or back out of the dock, that's when they would get their, their rudders and propellers fouled. That's why our, our value is larger because we really had nuisance algae way out beyond the end of the docks.
Well, that brings up another thing. The city has only been talking about treating the mill foil. But I know you do have other things up close by your docks. Is that something that you would want to have treated at the same time as well?
Well, I'd weigh in on that. Before the mill foil was present, we really didn't have that much of a problem. This summer, the mill foil captured the duckweed and kept that in our docks. And so, I think if the mill foil were gone, the water would flush out the rest of the stuff, keep it moving down the river.
Okay.
I'm in agreement with Ken.
Thought too, yep.
Well, I have two things I'll find out. One, can the city act as the agent? We might be able to do something creative there, but no promises. And then the other is how it would actually work with the aquatic doctors in keeping track of where one person's section ends and another one begins. So, there'll have to be a little bit of logistics there that they'll have to help with significantly. So, I will find out.
All right. One question though, I mean, are we setting ourselves up for any sort of pushback? When people look at Douglas's experience last year, will they say, well, you know, when Douglas did it, they treated all the way to the shoreline for, for folks that had docks and properties. Why aren't you doing it that way? Just putting that question out there in anticipation that it might come up.
I, I think that's a good point. Maybe we need to find out what we're talking about first here, cost wise, you know?
Yeah.
And, and see if it's nominal, say for, for a free, a single family home. If it's like, you know, a couple hundred dollars, there may not be an issue. But for, obviously for the condos, it's going to be quite a bit more.
Yeah, and, and I wonder, how many entities are we talking about? I mean, kind of, if, if we wanted to get this done and, and try to do a bit of cost sharing. You know, it's, it's, it's you and Garnet's condo. There's another one, I believe. How many, how many entities would we have to be maybe reaching out to to see if they'd want to participate? Really do this, you know, the right way next year? How many conversations do you think we'd have to have?
We figured that out one time, and I can't remember. There were, like, I, I got the list of the riparian owners, and then we, we allocated out who was in which, you know, which ones were condos and which ones are freestanding. And it's manageable. I'd say, I, I'm gonna hazard a guess at under 30.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think the key would be understanding the cost, you know? If, if, if the cost is manageable. You know, that, that's one discussion. If it's really blows up the bid a lot, then it's, then it's more complicated.
Yeah, of, of course, the owner though would have the opportunity to decline, right, and not participate.
Yeah. Yeah, it's true. I, I you sort of wonder though, if, 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 if you let one area kind of go, if it's just, if, if we're still gonna have to pay more down the road just to keep things under control because we haven't really kind of knocked it out.
Right, that, that was my point before. So, Karen, could you see what aqueducts think of that? Are they, would they be concerned?
Um, well, they did say that homeowners could piggyback on, on the city. But I, I will clarify.
Yeah. I, I think our question is, if, if some owners, a few owners, declined to participate. And so, the mill foil grows in their docks, does that compromise everybody else?
Okay, gotcha.
And, and Ken, there's, there's an issue, of course. Do they decline due to the price? Or do they decline due to ecological concerns? And if they decline due to price, you know, if, if the aqueducts say, you know, that's gonna hose it up, we recommend you do it anyhow, maybe we just do it. And, you know, again, an acre is a football field. Hundred yards, guys, you know, 300-ish feet. So, we literally can Google along the edge, every 300 feet is kind of an acre for this ballpark. And, and the cost is kind of 500, right, Karen, an acre? Is that right?
Well, it could be as much as five, six, five, along the shoreline, it could be as much as 575 an acre, depending on which chemical they use, because he said.
Yeah, but I can do 500 in my head, so.
Okay.
Yeah, but it takes two, it takes two treatments, though.
Yeah, no, duly noted, Pat, right. But, but I mean, we could at least get a kind of a ballpark just by going to Google and, and, you know, figure out what is the circumference of the big part of the lake.
Well, they, they did on their GIS, and he said if we did the whole thing, he estimated it to be about 45 acres. So, that's times 575.
Yeah, but, but Karen, I interpreted that where they were going to treat the entire area where I thought we were talking about the, the 15 acres in the middle, which is the problem. And then, just ring around the bathtub, so to speak. A, is, is that their 45 acre estimate?
No, the 45 acre was the whole thing.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, well, you know, number one, Douglas owns half of the whole thing, so there's that. And number two, a big part of the whole thing absolutely doesn't need to be treated because.
Yeah. Exactly, Ken. This, this new depth map you guys will get tomorrow. And, and I know you guys have historical ones as well. But, but there are a whole lot of that lake that's greater than 10 feet of water. And, and recall again, that other calculation I made. This, this Eurasian water mill foil really can't grow in anything greater than about seven feet of water. But if we round off to 10 feet, that's the only part of the lake we'd want to treat anyhow.
This, this conversation would be a lot easier to have if we, if we had a map. But if, if memory serves, there is that traditional area, and I think it's caused, by the way, the current flows. It's always had sort of almost like an island, you will, that's fairly shallow. And then, I, I believe it gets a little bit deeper around the shore where people can sort of navigate around.
Right.
Maybe if we message this, that the city is gonna go after that island of weeds. You know, that, that sort of, you know, it, it used to be represented as two patches on some of the areas we've seen. But if we sort of message it that we're going after the main island, because that's where, that's actually the shallowest part. It's not, it's not like your typical, you know, gets shallower and shallower up to a beach. There's that kind of sediment island. If we message that we're gonna go after that, but then we say, you know, we're gonna offer this opportunity for the other shoreline owners. Because if the, or in the lake goes down, like I think a lot of expect it will seasonally, the mill foil may be to them, and then maybe they do want to join in. So, there might be a way, if we do the right kind of press release, we might be able to sell it fairly successfully to get people to partner. Just a thought.
Yeah. Well, that's a good thought, Dean.
You know, you, as you said, it would help to have a map here. But I think if you drew a line from the Sergeant Marine gas dock to the point on the river where our condos are, where the court, that corner that Bob was referring to, that's the area that's most compromised, I think.
Yeah.
Not all of it, as, as Dean pointed out, there are patches in, in even that area that are quite deep.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's my recollection from, from last summer is, is that was the problematic area. It's like you identified, Ken. And, and, and people had sort of, I think, probably just with their props, created channels around the periphery of that weed island, if you will.
Yep.
Everyone tended to avoid that Sargasso Sea area.
Yeah, actually, the Star Sagatuck did us a great favor because they started coming around our, our shorelines.
Yes.
That paddle really chopped up the mill foil.
That, you know, with, with, with the unintended consequence of spreading it, but oh, well.
Maybe it just floated out to the big lake.
Yeah, maybe, that's hope.
Yeah, we weren't that lucky, no.
Yeah. So, so that, I mean, go ahead, sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry. So, so I'm in favor of what Scott is promoting here. I think that we, as a public, we go out into the lake and we attack that problem out in the middle of the lake. And as private owners, we attack our own problems, which really, when you stop and think about it, and as much as I'd like to have somebody else pay for my stuff, you know, that, that, that's not right. We, we enjoy our docks. The public doesn't enjoy our docks.
Yeah.
And, and I'm perfectly willing to pay my share. And I, I think I can speak for every one of the owners in our small condo association. I know I can speak for some because I have the proxy. So, we're perfectly willing to pay our share to get that weed problem taken care of in our dock area. And I'm, I'm guessing that everybody's gonna, well, everybody, I, I'm guessing that a large portion of the people come on board with that quite easily. I think they're just relieved that something's going to be done.
Yeah. I'm, I'm in favor of trying that approach. I think we'll, we'll need to tread carefully about, you know, if, if, if we're gonna sort of say, we're doing this because we have a responsibility to keep the lake navigable, that we then need to be careful that that doesn't get crosswise with the notion that people have like a wedge-shaped property right that goes all out to the center of the water body. I want, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that we might have be in conflict with those two notions of, of who's sort of, you know, got, got rights to do, do things out in the body of water. But maybe I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding.
Karen, haven't we resolved that by determining the lake is a responsibility of the city to maintain?
Yes, but we, we can specialize us. We don't have to pay for it.
Okay.
Well, yeah, you know, as Pat said, I think I can speak for our association. Bob's on the board as well.
Yeah.
We'd be willing to pay our, you know, our share for the shore, the piece of it.
Yeah, I agree, Ken. And, and I've, I've talked to the other, a couple of the other board members and they're, they're in violent agreement with us on, if we can get on board with aqueducts or whatever they're called and pay our pair, our fair share. They think it's great because that problem will go away. And if we try to solve it, it's going to get probably more expensive than if we're not part of the bigger approach.
Yeah. And, and there's, I think there's something to be said for, you know, I think this is where we're heading to enlist sort of the buy-in from the people that are right there, you know, kind of at the shoreline, you know, that have their docks there. And it's, they kind of consider their waterfront to get them to buy in and participate. It actually might be, you know, a good thing in terms of support for the project.
Yeah. I, I think the general public is going to question the, the city paying for, you know, doing the dock areas. So I, I think putting it forward right away, saying that, you know, we're going to do it the way, that way. I think will mollify a lot of the criticism.
Yeah. Okay.
I, I will rewrite the last to, to say that. And then I'll send it out one more time to you.
Okay. We need to do anything else?
Nope. Y'all, y'all liked the report the way it was. We'll just rewrite the end and one more time and then I think we're ready to go.
Cool.
And let's go to the council workshop on Wednesday. Is that right?
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Karen, do you still feel like we're on, on target time wise? Or, you know, this, this little hiccup is, is, are you concerned that we're not going to be able to partner with Douglas and aqueducts in time?
No, not at all. We're, we're good there.
All right. So we got a little time if we need to find two. Okay. Good.
Hey, hey Garnet, I saw your thumb up there. Are you okay with all this?
Yep, absolutely, y'all. I thought the, the report was very thorough and I thought it was very clear on page four with the, the bullets under riparian rights as far as where we are with what our responsibility is as a city and offering up the opportunity for private property owners to participate, I think is the way to go. It makes the most sense, but we have an obligation to take care of that. And this is setting us in that right direction. So yes, thank you.